And ordinance to rezone property with protection.
This is in order from a recommendation from the planning and zoning commission. The planning and zoning commission met on June seventeen twenty twenty five to hear ordinance or amend the ordinance three, three, nine, one. And at that hearing, the planning and zoning commission made a recommendation to approve the rezoning of property and to approve the preliminary development plan. The property in question is located at five, seven, six, one, Mountain Lake Road, five, eight, five, one, Mountain Lake Road, five, nine, two, one, Mountain Lake Road, five, nine, four, five, Mountain Lake Road, five, nine, fifty, one, Mountain Lake Road, and five, nine, five, nine, Mountain Lake Road, all in Baskerville, Alabama, and St. Col, three, five, oh, two, oh. And the planning and zoning commission, after having hearings on the matter, to recommend to the city council that they rezone this property from A one, Altecultural to I one, Light Industrial for all of the entire property. Attached to your resolution, you're going to find the recommendation from the planning and zoning board stating that they approved the development plan and recommend rezoning. Attached to that, you will find a preliminary plan, two preliminary plans for that property. This item has been advertised in the Western Star newspaper as provided by law, setting a hearing for today's date, July fifteenth, twenty twenty five, at nine o'clock, eight AM. And again, this is to, based on the recommendations of Logistics Land and Development Company through their agent and attorney, Martin Evans. And again, it is to approve the rezoning of the property from A one, Altecultural to I one, Light Industrial. In addition to the addresses that I just gave you for the property, a complete legal description of the property is attached by reason bounds. And also in that legal description, it is set out that it's being parcel one and parcel three. And if there is any confusion then, one should not be, because the property is described. The owner of the property has a number of parcels, one, two, three, four, five, and so on and so. But the only ones under consideration is parcel one and parcel three. And they are described by reason bound in detail. And this is a public hearing for the council to consider.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney. This is a hearing. We, we received several people that wanted to speak. But let me just set some guidelines. You can come to the mic and speak for two minutes, and then your time will be up. We don't want anyone repeating what the last person said, so we don't want forty people coming up and saying, say, you need to vote now. I need, you need to vote now. Give us the reason. I know there's several speakers. Uh, but we're not going to limit it just to the ones, because we don't have a sign-in sheet uh, like the county does, and we want to see. So anyone is welcome to come to the mic. If you want to line up to speak, like I said, just no repetition. State your reason, whether it's environmental or, or neighborhood noise, or whatever it is. State your reason.
Madam Chairman. We do have representatives here from Logistics Land and Investment Company. If it pleases the council, I think they will address the issue if you would like to.
Yes, we'll speak, we'll listen to the board, and then we'll hear the against.
Thank you, Mayor.
So if you're here to speak for the data center, please come forward and give us your input.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, and ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Martin Evans. My address is two thousand and one Park Place North, Suite five forty, Birmingham, Alabama, three, five, two, zero, three. As Mr. Killings noted, we are here seeking approval of a rezoning request. Rezone seven parcels of land from A one to I one for development of a state-of-the-art data center. Uh, the project is located off Rock Mountain Road by the intersection of I twenty, uh, fifty-nine and the four fifty-nine interchange. We do come before you with a positive recommendation from the planning and zoning committee, and as well as approval of our preliminary development plan by the planning and zoning commission. Uh, this matter actually went before the planning commission several times. It was tabled once, and then we received approval. And then there was actually a couple of residents that filed a temporary restraining order to prevent the council from hearing this case. So ultimately, that was dismissed by the court. Uh, the TRO was dissolved, and so we had to reschedule the process. So there have been delays, but there have been a lot of public hearings about this matter. A lot of presentations about the site plan and what we're doing. We did make some revisions to our preliminary development plan after receiving some opposition. Uh, we enhanced the buffering on all the property lines by the residential property. And my client will be able to go through more of that with you later. But I've got several members with me today from our group, including Brad Caver. He is with my client Logistics Land Investments. He's going to go over the project with you. And then we also have Connor Patton, who is our engineer, who's with Kim Lee Horn, who can respond to any technical questions that you've got. Before they come up and present, I want to mention a few things to you. First of all, you're going to hear opposition to this project. Okay? And I understand that there are large, that large numbers of people can, can be distracting and, and, you know, that it can be intimidating at times. But uh, I have never started on the council. I've never been elected, but I've started on the Jefferson County Planning and Zoning Commission for almost a decade. And I understand what it's like to be in front of big crowds, in particular, you know. If there's any type of development that comes, particularly near residential development, there's going to be opposition. And even if a developer wants to build next, new houses next to existing housing, you're going to hear opposition from it. And so opposition oftentimes points out traffic concerns, stormwater concerns, similar concerns like that. But I want you to bear in mind, as you well know, those are already heavily regulated by other departments and other government entities. You've got engineers here that are going to find two phones through our plans. You know, not only the city's engineers, but county to the extent they have.
He's presenting.
Oh, he gets special room? Okay.
Continue. Do you want him to stop? We'll let him stop if you want to. We'll give him two minutes. Do you want to hear the whole story?
We all get the same amount.
Okay, so you don't want to hear the whole story?
I'd rather we all get the same amount.
He's going to present, and then you'll have your.
Madam President, I can assure you that the amount of time that we vote to the proponents will be far less than the amount that will be delivered to opposition. Anyway, as I was saying.
You can't be quiet, we'll clear the room.
So as I was saying, our engineering plans will be heavily scrutinized at all levels of government as they apply. And so those protections, many of the protections that you'll hear complaints about are already in place. So you don't have to decide whether or not traffic is a concern, or stormwater is a concern. Again, that's what your engineers do. And so, you know, as you, you know, sift through, sift through the opposition, determine whether it's something that you can consider or not, bear in mind that there are many other branches of government, other protections already in place, that we are not trying to circumvent by a rezoning request. What you're really dealing with this morning is whether this proposal is good for the city. Okay? It's, and it certainly is. This project's going to take a large piece of vacant land close to the interstate and put it to an extremely productive use, which will create jobs, be a catalyst to the local economy, and provide tremendous tax benefits to the city. And our site plan will show that this will be done with minimal impacts on surrounding properties. From a land use perspective, and I studied land use and regional urban planning, this is an ideal project, something that planners dream about, when you take an unproductive piece of property with limited impact, and you put it to a productive use. And so, for example, to give you an idea of what we're dealing with, this is a six hundred and seventy acre parcel of land. That's over a section of land. If they were all a square, that would be one mile long on one side, by one mile long on the other side. This is a very, very large piece of property. But only a hundred acres of it will actually be utilized for development of this project. So there would be eighteen buildings that we plan to install over phases, or we plan to instruct, instruct over phases. And those are all shown on our site plan. Half of them are well within the interior of the property. This property has got a lot of topography, and so there are ridges and things like that that will conceal many of these buildings from the road, and you won't even be able to see them from, you know, the surrounding boundaries. So this property is less than a quarter mile from the interstate twenty fifty-nine. The property to the north of us is totally undeveloped. The property to the east of us is totally undeveloped. So there'll be no impact whatsoever on properties to the north and to the east. There are only twelve houses that abut this six hundred and seventy acre tract. All right? There are three roads which surround the property. You've got Forest Mountain Drive to the south, you've got Rock Mountain Road, Rock Mountain Lake Road to the southeast, and Diane Drive to the east. And so there are actually only two additional houses, which are between those roads and this parcel of land. So there are only fourteen houses on this entire six hundred and seventy acre parcel that are between the parcel and the road. And so, you know, all fourteen of these houses are actually, they're outside of the city of Baskerville, too. They're all in the county. And they're all approximately a half mile or less from I twenty, so with the traveling cars and everything here. So um. Again, you know, although there's opposition from people from the city, from the outside of the county, this is an extremely good project for Baskerville. When you look at a macro scale particularly, you know, this is a wonderful plan, wonderful project for the city overall. And again, don't get caught up in these little specific engineering requirements and things like that. Look at it from a macro scale, is this good for the city of Baskerville? So uh, we again would ask you to approve our rezoning request. And at this time, uh, Madam President, I'd like for Brad Caver to come up and walk through the plans a little bit more. Thank you.
Thanks, Martin. Um, thank you, the city council for hearing this case today. I do have some information I'd like to pass out to the council, if that's okay. And then also, we did bring our site plan on the easel there, and I'll just turn that towards you, so you can see it as well as I'm, as I'm speaking and explaining the project. I'm Brad Caver with Logistics Land Investments. Just to, I just want to talk about the site plan really quick. And if you don't mind, I'm going to just walk over, point to it, and I'll make sure to speak loudly so everyone can hear. The, as, as Martin said, the, the scale of this, it's six hundred and seventy-five acres. The distance between the top and bottom of the site here, that's, that's one mile, just for scale. So the buildings are, they're quite large, and it's, it's easy to just, to not understand the scale of it. So when we're talking about distances, the number of buildings, as Martin said, six hundred and seventy-five acres, we're disturbing only about a hundred of those acres for, for the construction. We're showing a building, we're showing a vegetation buffer of a hundred feet on the southern property line, a building setback of a hundred and forty feet. On the eastern side, we have a hundred and thirty-foot vegetation buffer and a building setback of two hundred and seventy feet. And talking about just the use and nature of the project, data centers are, they don't have, it's not a huge employment center, doesn't produce a lot of traffic. There is no manufacturing happening on, happening on the side. There's no smokestacks, there's no crunching, there's no heavy truck traffic coming on and off the site. So this is a little bit about the nature of the buildings. So as they're set back, and we're maintaining the vegetative buffers from the surrounding community. And as Martin said, there's two large ridges on the site. Just trying to explain the facts of where the buildings are located, what, what's going to be happening in the buildings. Again, there's big servers in these buildings. Not a lot of people moving around inside of them, no equipment coming in and out of them. So they're not, not producing pollution, not creating a bunch of noise. And again, to, to the traffic, we, we produced a preliminary traffic uh, impact study showing there's minimal impact to these roads. As Martin said, when we go to submit to the DOT, there's a whole permitting process in place for that. So any requirements for improvements to the road would be a burden to the developer. So what, what this project is not, it's not a burden to the school system. It's not adding any more students into the schools. Yet it's serving as a base to increase taxes that do benefit those schools. So I wanted to talk about just some information that's going to be brought up, that I want to address head-on as far as what is, is and is not true about the project, the environmental concerns. Because you're going to hear, you're going to hear things that simply are, are not true. And I, I appreciate all the people who took time out of their day to come to a meeting like this. But I, I, all I want to do is speak to, to the facts. You're going to hear a lot of things that simply are not facts. So the facts of this case are, we've done numerous environmental assessments for this project. We have, we have environmental side assessment, threatened endangered species before, done an archeological assessment on the site. We performed a wetland delineation and a traffic impact study, as I said. None of those things have found any recognized environmental concerns on the site. Has found no endangered species on this site. So if, if we had those things on the site, we wouldn't be looking at, quite frankly. How we've laid out the buildings on the site avoids all the strains that we found on the site, all the wetlands. So we would not be, we would not be impacting strains. We would not need a general permit from the EPA to, to do that, because we're not impacting it. And again, the, the normal permitting process for site development is, is yet to happen. And through that, that course of engineering and plan review, we would have to address all these concerns through the appropriate, appropriate bodies. Uh, concerns about utilities, so these buildings can use a lot of water for, for cooling. So the, the servers in the building need to be cooled. They, they create energy and need to be cooled. They can do that through either evaporative cooling, which is where the water comes into play, or air-cooled systems. It is up to the utility to tell us what water is available. So except water's not available, we can't use the water that's not available to us. It's up to the, it's up to the Warrior River Water Authority to tell us how much water is available to us. We have had communications with them. There is a, there's a, several projects and upgrades that will need to have, happen to their system in order for them to allow us to take, take water. So if they say, if this much water is available for your system, it would require these upgrades, and it would cost this much, that's something for us to consider in working with the water. So we can't take any more water than the utilities have, have been saying. And we may have to look at different options to cool the, the right amount of water that is available. Again, just speaking to the endangered species, the, we're going to hear about these species of fish that are claimed to exist in this area. It's not, they haven't been found on this site. And again, we're not impacting the strains of water. We're not impacting any, any fish in here. Any more than any other construction site would, where you have normal measures for erosion control and best management practices for, for settlement. And as Martin said, you know, there's significant economic benefits to this. I'm going to ask J.C. to come up and speak to that real quickly, if, you know.
Hey, good morning, council. J.C. Matthews with the Birmingham Business Alliance. Happy to be here and support Project Marvel as it continues to go through. Uh, Project Marvel will make significant investment here in the area. Probably the most investment that the state of Alabama has seen. This is significant, uh, as far as the impact they would make on the school system and the local tax revenue that would be generated. So we are definitely in support. Uh, we have ran an assumption based on some of the numbers that they have provided, which has created an economic impact analysis. Uh, we continue to work with the city through economic impact analysis as negotiations are ongoing. Uh, but overall, you know, the potential of creating three hundred and thirty jobs that will be pulled from the local community. Also, with those jobs, the average revenue is about a hundred and twelve thousand per job. And so that's significant, based on the average wage here locally anyway. So this is a very good project, you know, as you can hear from the developers on what's to come. You know, again, working through the details, right? You know, things as far as what the environment looks like, but that information is going to be provided. Uh, but overall, uh, I believe you would be well pleased with the impact and the outcome of this project. Thank you.
Counselor, any questions for the council?
Oh, yes, ma'am, of course. Mr. Gerber.
Okay, there we go.
Yes. I just have three questions for you, and pretty much those are the same questions that I asked you during planning. So when we look at the servers, can you hear the servers throughout the project when they are in a closed room?
No, you can't hear the servers.
We have servers here in City Hall. You don't hear anything. That's just how we, how we communicate. You stated something in reference to you aren't willing to do the upgrades, correct? When you look at the infrastructure, is that correct?
Correct. Yes, and we would have no choice but to perform and pay for those upgrades if we were to get the, the level of water we need.
Okay, thank you. One last question. You spoke on the cooling system, okay? What type of cooling system? Will it be per se, will it be the closed loop water cooling system? Pretty much, because that's what most data centers have gone to.
Yes, most likely, yes. I mean, it's, it's still, still to be designed. So it's a, it's a, you know, it's an evaluation to be made based on what water's available, the climate, the user, and their particular equipment, and what their preferences are. But most likely, it would be.
Okay. And I do have one last one. In reference to the generators, will the generators be to the far most part of the building so that citizens cannot hear them?
Yes.
And when will generators come on?
Yes, good question. Um, so, yes, on the site plan, you have it in your handout. It's somewhat, again, the scale makes it perhaps harder to see. But yeah, the generator yards will always be facing away from the property line, so away from any homes. Uh, there's, there's an exhibit in the handout I gave you that show what measures are used to, you know, abate the noise, to keep it, keep it minimal, ensure that, you know, there's no, there's no more noise crossing the property line than, than the city ordinance allows for. We just simply have to adhere to the noise ordinance. We, we have no choice. But in general, I would say, yeah, there's a, a local news story done recently. A, a journalist went to the Metta Campus in Huntsville and looked at that building. And I think that, this is a really good account of the quiet nature of the buildings. And someone directly next door to it says he forgets it's there, he could fall asleep on his porch, these are quiet buildings. They do have generators in case of a power outage. Those generators are tested about three hours per month during the day, not during the quiet hours of the day. Uh, but otherwise, the generators are not amused. They're there for emergency backup only. So if there were no power, the, the buildings, the generators would jump on, and so would, you know, anyone else who has a generator at their house, and they're using it back at their power. So it would be along those, those timelines.
Counselor Jackson.
Yes. Got a question for you. You mentioned about the vegetation buffer. So, and this is just in my head to get a clearer picture. If this, this vegetation buffer in the front and around the sap, so we will not be able to see these buildings from the road, right?
Correct. You, you would not. The closest the build, the closest building to a road would be the building on the, the top right. There's, there's four there, so the building in the lower right, and it's still several hundred feet away, away from the road. And there actually is an exhibit in the handout I gave you showing different perspectives from the roads. And you either have to look through, yeah, hundreds of feet of, of dense, dense forest, or through a ridge, and, you know. The, the site really does kind of nestle this campus away from, from view.
Will it be built on the incline, or is it going to be wet?
Now, so generally where, the, the buildings are positioned the way they are due to the topography, right? So there is a large ridge on the backside of the property, there's a large ridge on the front side. All but four of the buildings are nestled between those ridges. And then there's four buildings set um, to, to the east of that, that easternmost, most ridge. But generally, we put the building where it's flat as some say.
Counselor Stevens.
I have a couple of questions. First is, how long would the project be, uh, infrastructure?
That's, that's a good question. It's, it's, it's going to be phased, right? We're not going to go do all this at the same time. Roughly speaking, it's, it's probably eight, eight years, different phases through, through eight years, right? And stopping and starting and, and adding more buildings and, um. You know, that's a general broad kind of timeline, but it's, it's to be determined.
And the second question, uh, from what I'm hearing and seeing, uh, looks like a major noise or nuisance that's going to come, it's going to be coming in the construction phase. Once the building is built, everything should be fine and back to normal.
Yes, I, but I would say during the construction phase even, you know, the, for example, the buildings in the, in the the middlemost buildings in the site, you're, you're perhaps a mile to the closest house. So the noise during construction, yeah, it's going to sound like a construction project. I mean, as far as the construction goes, it's built similar to a warehouse, right? So there's several warehouses in the area. People have seen that construction, it's going to be similar, because they have equipment on there, you're grading a pad, you have vertical structure, more concrete. But so there, there's nothing special about those activities, as far as a data center knows versus another middle road, since it's normally construction, yeah, and it's, and it's just, it's always six hundred and seventy-five acres.
Ms. Todd. Yeah.
Counselor King arrived at the council meeting at nine thirty-nine a.m.
Anyone else? Counselor? Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I don't have anything to add.
Now we'll open it up for public comments. Stevens.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Speaker Andrew Haddish.
Rob Leffert, sixty-six ninety-five, Griffin Avenue Lane, McCullough, Alabama. I've got a handout I'd like to present to you this morning that shows the developer's site plan with an overlay of the planned I four twenty-two interstate. I'm sure you are all aware of the four twenty-two plan that started in two thousand and fourteen. It's a fifty-two mile interstate that ties in directly to I four fifty-nine and twenty fifty-nine. This overlay will show you clearly how this project interacts with that planned interstate. I will make a correction after looking at the latest plan review that the developer submitted. My plan shows five buildings being directly in the path of four twenty-two intersection or interstate. That should be corrected to seven buildings. Almost half of the buildings and four of the roads are in direct conflict with four twenty-two. Now either you or city administrators, your responsibility certainly would lie with the citizens of making appropriate long-term plans, and this is clearly in interference with those plans. My second point regards to the June zoning meeting. It took place on June seventeenth. I would like to use this forum as my official contest of that vote. The agenda was very clear on the items that were to be voted on. And at the last minute, Mr. Attorney, Mr. Mayor, your commissioners, your board members added the plan development, approval of the plans, and that clearly was not on the agenda. So in our opinion, that vote was no and void. And you really shouldn't proceed today with the vote in, in lieu of the fact that that vote was illegal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the fact that you are the responsible public officials to make your decision.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. John.
Yep. Excuse me, pardon me, the old crowd is back here. So let's meet the interest. Ron Morgan, sixty-three forty Mountain Forest Drive, McCall, Alabama. Here's a little bit better map that shows, uh, the impact to the communities on this site. Now, Brad was kind of telling me that he did move these bills back a whopping one hundred and forty feet, which is great. Except for the fact that nobody's been out there in the wintertime and saw the fact that you can see everything. I've seen my neighbor fishing in his lake in the wintertime. I can't even see his barn in the summertime. So it's a difference in time of year when you can and cannot see. Okay. Logistics land investment incorporated in Delaware, part of the C.T. Corporation. C.T. Corporation is a wholly owned subsidiary of Walters Clure out of the Netherlands. They have interest in forty-five different governments. They are a registered foreign agent. They also have ties to marketing and banking in the country of China, although they go, they know they don't, they don't have a client. But I'm just saying, there's some questions here about where this is going. So it's already been reported to the Agricultural, uh, Foreign Investment Disclosure Act, uh, that they are a foreign corporation investing in Alabama. The other fact is Alabama Power produces a grand total of fourteen thousand megawatts of power for the entire state. This site plan at full completion is twelve hundred megawatts, almost ten percent of Alabama Power's total expenditure in a year. The only plant close to this place is James Miller, which produces a grand total of two point six megawatts. So they're going to have to pull power from six different plants, which is more than the City of Birmingham investment combined to power this beast. TVA is running into that problem in Memphis, and they had to bring in gas turbine generators on-site to produce just a hundred and fifty megawatts. And now there's a lawsuit against them because that was illegal to do. Okay? So they're telling you that they've got power to do this? Just because they're on a transmission line doesn't mean that Alabama Power can flip a switch and provide an additional twelve hundred megawatts of power out of the backside of their bus. Ain't going to happen. So now you're going to have to build another power plant or two, which is going to, and every damn one of them except for Brown's Nuclear is gas or coal.
Mr. Morgan, your time's up.
Well, thank you.
Good morning, I'm Eric Pippins, fifty-four, fifteen, John Delane. Eric Pippins, Eric Pippins, fifty-four, fifteen, John Delane, that's from Alabama. Thank you a lot, my speakers, President and Mayor. Um, my name's Eric Pippin. I am a resident of Red Mountain Heights. I'm here today to speak out against the proposed rezoning that would allow massive data centers in our neighborhood. These facilities consume enormous amount of electricity and water, and the costs will ultimately fall on everyday residents like us. We're already seeing rising utility bills and adding the kind of industry strains to our instruct, infrastructure can make these costs skyrocket. This project may benefit outside corporation, but it will come at the direct expense of the families who live here. But it will come at the direct expense of the families who live here. I urge the council to vote no on rezoning. Now, we're talking about the data center, uh, ultimately, but the rezoning is the most important part because it opens the door up to other businesses. That's a start. We have decades of people here that have lived in this community with no bother. I moved back. How many of you can say you went back to your community and build there, looking and searching and knowing that you have a place for your family to be raised and continue? I guarantee you, most of you have moved out of the community that you grew up in. But most of these people here right today have moved back to their community. I moved back to that community for the schools, the community, the people, the whole nine yards. We have done a pillow in the community, even for Bessemer, we might be the cutoff, but we have done a pillow to Bessemer community.
My name is Charles Miller, and I'm the policy director of the Alabama River Alliance. We're a statewide nonprofit dedicated to protecting and restoring Alabama's water resources. Our address is four four three nine, Pittsburgh, Alabama. Uh, I expected to have three minutes today, so I'll cut these short and hand a clerk a copy of these written comments. I want to talk specifically about the assertion that has been made by these developers that things like environmental issues, water quality, uh, those are kind of somebody else's problems. And those are not issues that you should have questions about or concern yourselves with because that is going to be taken care of by the Fish and Wildlife Service and things of that nature. Well, there's at least two issues on this site that will not be able to be taken care of by U.S. Fish and Wildlife or by any state board. First of all, the Birmingham Dart, which does live downstream of this site. Mr. Caper is right, it's not listed as an endangered species. The reason it's not listed is because it was discovered so recently. It does not have time to go through the listing process. It may not be endangered by law, but it is most certainly endangered in fact because it only lives in southwestern Jefferson County. It wasn't any of this data center. Fish and Wildlife won't have anything to say about that because it's not listed, unfortunately. But this data center, as a Yale biologist says, has the potential to nuke the creek that is the habitat, the only habitat for that fish. The other aspect which will not be addressed by any state or national board or body is water quantity use. In Alabama, we have no water quantity laws, so no state body or board will be examining whether the volume of water this project requires is reasonable or will harm neighboring communities. I would urge the developers to go read Barton versus City of Linden because the water use here will be subject to litigation by somebody. We sincerely ask that the council table this until we can get answers to some of these questions that the residents are asking for. I don't think they're being unreasonable. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning. Becky Morgan, sixty-three forty, Mountain Forest Drive. There are so many reasons that these high hyperscale data centers are being fought off all over the country. The main thing I'm going to say is, is that, that, that your posters are inaccurate. They do cause cancer because of pollution. And that's why my primary, I'm speaking on is the air pollution. I want you to ask right now, but we need to know how many generators we're going to be back up for the twelve hundred megawatts because that's a huge factor. If it's between three and six hundred, so three hours a month, and that adds up. That particular matter, it's just one component of the pollution, will travel. It's going to come in our backyards and it's going to comb a larger particle, it's thirty miles. The smaller particles travel thousands of miles. It's coming to Bessemer too. We're already in corridor, corridor with Miller plant. They are for the ninth year, the number one gas polluter in the entire United States. I can't say that loud enough. We're already in the path of all these pollutants. And in this environment we live in, we're trying to take the toxins out of our food and out of our, the chemicals we use on our body. And we're being asked now to breathe it and have it in our water. Been told there's not, not even, not even well, not even well water, uh, seventy tanks, all the issues that, uh, all the issues coming out of that. I got to get you, there's a second order, one four, one four, one, that the government says if you lace our lens, you have to, um, you have to, the total cancer risk from air pollution is or at below the national average according to the Environmental Protection Agency. They wouldn't put that in there for federal mandate, the requirement, put in place by Biden, left by Trump. If it didn't cause cancer, it does. The pollution does.
Thank you.
Good morning, fourteen man, sixty-one twenty-five, Mount Lake Road, McCall, Alabama. Hope you guys are doing well. Um, large hyperscale data centers, uh, can consume up to five million gallons.
Or speak up, Laura.
Large hyperscale data centers can consume up to five million gallons of water per day according to the Environmental and Energy Study Institute. Um, additionally, data center developers are increasingly tapping into surface and underground aquifers to cool facilities. This poses issues for nearby streams, wells, rivers and lakes. In May of twenty twenty-five, Jefferson County's Environmental Services Department submitted its municipal water pollution prevention or if the M W P P report to the Jefferson County Commission is required. In part seven, the county reported only point three two four billion gallons per day, or M G D, of new waste water flow and checked no to whether the valley pit treatment facility would be overloaded. Attachment A, however, um, on their, their report, had several projects that were listed, uh, most notably the TPA Bessemer project, which they said, uh, uses two thousand M G D, which is two billion gallons of water per day. Um, TPA Bessemer, uh, is the eighteen building data center now known as Project Marvel. This was the first use of the TPA label, which appears in no zoning annexation or environmental notices. Um, I urge you to ensure the following is not bypassed. Bessemer's M S four stormwater permit obligations, public notice and comment requirements, local infrastructure oversight and accountability. Um, I also encourage you to engage A M M W P P rules, admin code R three three five six eleven, Clean Water Act, uh, Plan for Training Plan Transparency, E P A M S four sewer plan standards, federal truth and submission requirements. The consequences are significant. A ma- a massive industrial project is being allowed to advance without proper oversight, capacity review or environmental safeguards, putting strings, floodplains and neighborhoods at risk. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning, Sandy Wong Davis, eleven oh eight, Fourth Way. Sandy Wong Davis, eleven oh eight, Fourth Way, Pleasant Grove. Um, I'm speaking today as a concerned taxpayer and a young person who will live with the long-term consequences of this decision. I'm twenty-two years old. I may be the youngest person speaking today, but I know I will not be the last generation affected by the data center. For over two years, I've worked in public health with GASP and as a substitute teacher in Jefferson County and Bessemer City Schools. I understand why the city wants to bring in the development for, uh, and tax revenue. I share that hope and I want schools to be better funded and our local economy to grow. But I have to ask, what message are we sending to our youth if we allow this project to move forward without transparency and without a clear commitment to public health and safety? The status center will take seven or eight years to build. For a child in Bessemer, that's nearly half their childhood. This site sits less than three miles from Bessemer City High School, Bessemer City Middle School, West Hills Elementary and Jonesboro Elementary, as well as several Jefferson County schools, directly downwind of the proposed site during spring and summer. That means kids will breathe in construction pollution, including particulate matter two point five for years, which will affect especially kids with asthma. These are the same kids we say we're inve- investing in with new technology and economic development. I've read Bessemer's long-term planning documents. I see how deeply you want to create jobs, attract industry and make the city thrive. But who are you building that future for? It's for the young people of Bessemer. And if they grow up seeing this level of secrecy and disregard for public health, will they even want to stay here? Will they trust the city of Bessemer as an institution? Will they want to work for the data center whose construction made them sick, exploited their families through doubled or tripled utility bills and left them without power? Alabama already struggles with brain drain. Our most talented young people are leaving. If this is the message we send, that their lives, their health and their futures are negotiable, part of the cost of a cost benefit analysis, then we are not creating a place they want to stay or come back to. This is not just about the number of jobs or dollars involved. It's about trust and it's about legacy.
Good morning, council members. My name is Lilith Subston. I live at eighteen sixty-eight Highway one fifty in Bessemer, Alabama. The property that my husband and I live on has been in his family for four generations. We are hoping it will be five. Um, it is three and a half acres. It is forested. It has a seasonal stream that crosses through it. The property supports bobcats, bears, foxes. Um, this would be significantly impacted by the amount of water that the status center is using. We do not know how this will affect the water table of Bessemer as a whole. Also, um, the, in the city, the Marvel City Plan for twenty forty, one of the things that was mentioned was, uh, accountability and predictability. The two things that I would not assign to a massive data set, data center project would be accountability and predictability. Accountability because, you know, as has been mentioned before, this is a foreign agent that is investing in our, uh, city that we do not know the roots of, we do not know where they come from. And then also, uh, predictability. Tech is one of the least predictable, uh, industries in the country. When this A I bubble bursts, what are we going to do with this giant data center? What are we going to do with it? Is it going to rot there? Because again, this is not a predictable, uh, investment into our community. And then the environmental impacts are just unbelievable. Um, again, the fish, the pollution, the air quality. Um, I, I beg the counselors to put the citizens of Bessemer before a random shell corporation that I know y'all are going to be making money from, but sorry, uh, you're a public service. Um, so the citizens should be your priority. Thank you for your time.
I'm Laura Walker. I have lived in Bessemer for over thirty years. I'm a licensed social worker and I concur with many of the comments we've heard just now. We heard earlier from the, uh, pro side that you'll hear, uh, things that are just not true today. And I think we have heard things that are just not true from the speakers speaking in support of this project. They've said it will not impact the schools. I have a hard time imagining how this will not impact the schools and the students when we know that it will require a huge amount of water, power and will create air pollution. How does that not impact our schools, our children, our city? We are all here to find the way forward for our community, you, the council, we, the people, but we need to come together. I think the point was well made that the whole industry of technology is kind of a wild card. It's always changing. It changes very fast. We've been looking at electric cars, but now I hear that, um, a country has, uh, designed a battery that doesn't require electricity. They can make power from, uh, air and water and iron. So all of a sudden, an industry, you know, just disappears, becomes obsolete. So I think, uh, when you put all your eggs into a particular, uh, technology, you're risking a lot. And when you make an intelligent decision, you need to consider your risks versus your benefits. And I think that's what we're here to do today. But we've heard a lot about benefits and they dangle that in front of us about money and jobs and in, and, you know, uh, empowering. money and jobs and, and, you know, uh, empowering our, our community. But we have to consider the risks. And one final thing is, this is not just a conversation for our community. This is happening all over the country. Um, on May 25th-
Ms. Walker-
-there was a public conversation about how-
Your time is up. Your time is up. Would you state your name, your address for the-
Yes, yes. Um, 5881 South Shakescrest Road, Bessemer.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has anything to add that's different than what's already been stated?
Hello, my name is Eric McCullers, uh, 209 16 Avenue, West Birmingham.
Say your name again.
My name is Eric McCullers, 209 16 Avenue, West Birmingham. Uh, I'm a, I'm a part of Red Mountain Heights Community Association. I want to chairperson. I'm mainly concerned right now is, uh, I've lived in McCullough pretty much all my life. Um, you left eight years to build these projects. And there, with, with this timeframe, I wonder what would our community look like in eight years? When you say you go start and stop, start and stop, start and stop, where would there be in a normal city until there are residents? What we're asking for, if this city council do decide to give them this data center, would y'all put some in place that will protect the citizen of McCullough? We realize that we're in a Bessemer cutoff area. And in the future, we hoping that we change that Bessemer cutoff area will have some kind of input within the Bessemer City Council, within the Bessemer political thing. Because any time that anything is within the Bessemer cutoff area, we have no say so. We only have to go to Jefferson County. And the county pretty much knows that Bessemer's going to do what Bessemer is going to do. So the thing we ask the city council and the mayor to do is to put something in this place where if this, the project do, does go forward, that y'all have something to do to protect the citizen that will be impacted with this data center. Thank you.
I'm Jim, I'm Jim Lammon. I live at 6494 Rock Mountain Lake Road in McCullough. I have an office on Fourth Avenue Southwest here in Bessemer. Everybody take a look to your, to your right. See the building out there? Do y'all know what that building was? Or still is? That's a AT&amp;T building. It was a little south building. It was full of equipment that managed all the telephones in this area. The building's empty. That's what happens in the future. Every building that I worked on, computer I put in is all obsolete now. That's what the future is. Data changes. What's on that building out there? You can put, oh, it's got more power than my watch. My watch has more power in that building here. That's how fast it changes. But time doesn't change, okay? Time stays the same. We need to protect our children, as been mentioned. We need to protect our communities. Mayor, I'm asking you. I came to this building, this city in 1972. I worked in that building. I worked at the AT&amp;T building downtown. It's empty because of how things changed. That's how data centers change. They might start one or two or three, but the next feature, it may change totally. But the biggest thing that came up today is this is a foreign company. We don't know what they're going to do with those buildings. You don't know what they're going to do with those buildings. They do, but they're not saying it because we got a non, you got a non-s closure clause. But we need to know what they're doing. That's what President Trump said. We've got foreign companies that are next to our airports. We've got foreign companies that are all over this country. Now we're going to try to have one in our community? That's totally out of question. You have the power to change that. I'm asking you for the city's safety. And as taxpayer of Bessemer, I'm asking you to take care of that. Thank you so much for your time.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Ryan Anderson and I'm an attorney at the Southern Environmental Law Center, located at 2829 Second Avenue South. SCLC is a nonprofit, nonpartisan legal advocacy organization rooted in and focused on protecting human health and the environment. SCLC shares many of the concerns that you've heard by residents in our partner organizations regarding these proposed zoning changes that would allow construction of a massive data center. Principal among these is the utter lack of transparency or any indication that this council has the necessary information that would lead it to make a sound and informed decision today. Because of these unknowns, I join with many others in asking that you postpone any vote on this decision until you have adequate information. Without detailed information about resource impacts that this data center will have, approval by this council is arbitrary and insufficiently informed. The lack of detail provided to citizens makes this public hearing effectively a box-checking exercise, not the meaningful public involvement required by law. Especially concerning is the fact that a number of residents and concerned citizens have been completely shut out of this process. I've been standing outside for the last 45 minutes, not being able to hear any debate or hear the developers' presentation. So I have no way to respond to what the developer has presented to you all today. However, even with this scarce information, it's clear that this proposed project does not conform with the vision established in Bessemer's comprehensive plan. This area is designated as rural. The, uh, massive data center complex consisting of 18 Walmart-sized supercenters that requires vast amounts of water and electricity does not fit with this rural vision for the area, and zoning data centers as light industrial is unjustified. Given the excessive concerns with this proposed data center complex, we encourage you to maintain existing zoning standards and deny the proposed zoning changes, or at the very least postpone this vote until you have adequate information. Thank you.
My name is Tom Capone. I live at 914 Ventura Drive, 35111. I have a well at my house. This is going to be sweet. I have a well in my house. If the water table goes, what happens to my well? Nothing. I guess that's my problem to deal with. What about fires? What about the fire department if they run out of water? My house burns. Ah, again, my problem. I got insurance. It'll pay for it. Nobody else cares. What about other people? Is this going to turn into the state of California where we can't fight fires for our local community? Bessemer's got their problem solved, but we in McCullough area don't. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Jimmy Stevens. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Bessemer, had represented, uh, our district here several years ago. I even have my picture on the wall back there. So I know most everyone in this room. But really, there's something that hasn't been said yet, is that this isn't about the environment. You're not, you're not going to pay any attention to that. This is about the money, okay? This is about the tax revenue that has been laid before the city of Bessemer that you're depending on, you're looking forward to. And that, in all likelihood, they're going to ask you to obey. They're going, they're not going to say that you're going to get all this money. They just say that that money is available there. But in order for this data center to come, you're going to have to obey the sales tax. You're going to have to obey the property tax for X amount of years. And you're going to have to forego everything except the small amount of school taxes that, that you do get. And then you will get your data center, and they will be there and they will make money at the benefit of the citizens of Bessemer and these citizens back here that, um, Representative Holsey and I represent. So I'll stand before you right now and say that as a Jefferson County Commissioner, I will vote against any tax amendments that come before us for this particular project. I ask you to do the same.
Good morning. Um, thank you so much, Mayor Golay, Madam President, and council members for allowing me to come today. My name is Lee Holsey. I am a State House member. I serve District 15, which encompasses all of Jefferson County and Shelby County, but primarily, um, a portion of Bessemer, as well as all of McCullough that is situated inside of Jefferson County. Um, I am a note reader kind of person, so I apologize for not making constant eye ta, eye contact as I do this. Um, I just want to make sure I get my thoughts right before you guys. Um, so again, I do thank you for this opportunity. While I completely understand, from even a state perspective, we need data centers. And I'm not opposed to data centers in the context of the fact that we do need them within the state to continue to keep up with the things that we're going to have to keep up with. But what I am here for today is to respectfully stand in opposition to this proposed rezoning of this particular data center. While I understand the importance of economic growth and technology infrastructure, this facility would be located directly behind 14 residential properties. Families that, yes, do not live in the city limits and obviously therefore do not have a vote nor feel like they have a voice, but they are absolutely going to bear the brunt of the impact of this project. And I think that our job, whether you serve, I serve a district, but everything that I do when I vote is about the well-being of Alabama too. It can't just be about the people I serve. It has to be about their neighbors too. And so I encourage you to just think through that as well. It's something I'm challenged in doing in my job every single day that we show up and vote on matters. This rezoning is obviously introducing concerns and inconveniences into what has always been a quiet residential area. These homeowners chose their properties for peace, not for proximity to a 24/7 operation. And I would just urge you guys to consider not just the short-term gains, but the long-term message that this sends to everyone. In closing, and I'm sorry I'm going over, um, I, I have connections all over the state, um, in Huntsville particularly as well. Right now, you've got some groups that will not even entertain exploring these data centers because there's more information that's needed. But also, they're not bringing the revenue that the city thought they would. And that's the truth. That's directly from those individuals there in Huntsville. It's the same thing that, uh, Commissioner Stevens was talking about. There are promises, and I come from local government. I get it. I get the abatement process. I, I've been doing this a long time. It's not going to bring all the money you think it's going to bring. Yes, ma'am. It's all right. You can call me late. I'm fine with that. I thank you for your time and I, I sincerely appreciate you allowing me to go over as well. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Lauren Adele. I live at 2521 Red Start Lane, 3526. I am in the Bessemer cutoff. Um, I would like to say that Alabama is a poor state. We pay some of the highest utility states in the entire country based on the median income of the residents of the state of Alabama. This facility will use 90 times more energy than all the residents of Bessemer. It will use 10 times more energy than all the residents of Birmingham. It is set to be the largest data facility center in the country, and some of these facilities use up to nine million gallons of water per day. You can build more power, but you can't build more water. Water's a finite resource. I know it's hard to believe based on what we've seen recently with all of our rain, but we are a drought state. We are very often in drought conditions. What do we do as the residents of Bessemer, Jefferson County, Birmingham, the state of Alabama, when our showers don't work, when we have no water pressure, when we can't wash our dishes, when we can't cook our food? We have no way to generate more water than what God sends us from the sky. There is no way that this facility and the resources that it will use will not increase the utility rates of the residents of Alabama. Our power rates will go up. Our water rates will go up. We are a poor community, right? We are already in a situation of many, many food insecurities. We're asking families to pay more utility than most people can already afford. This will just create more poverty conditions within our community, which is already resource confined. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone that has anything different other than water pollution and, and, do you have something different to speak on?
Do you know what I was going to talk about?
Well, because that's what everybody else is talking about. So we, I said to begin with, we don't want a repetition of 40 people coming to you saying, you know, it's going to cost us water, it's going to cost us-
I couldn't, I couldn't tell you what's been said because I've been stuck out in the hallway, man.
Would you give us an address?
Nelson Brook, 71237 Street South. I'm with Black Warrior Riverkeeper. This project's going to be a massive water user. It's going to be a huge energy hog, and it's also going to be a large wastewater producer. And so that's a concern that I have. This isn't just going to affect the local community. It's going to affect, uh, Little Blue Creek, Hot Mile Creek, Valley Creek, and the Black Warrior River downstream. So there's stormwater concerns. When you take the forest away and you put in a massive amount of impervious surface, it's going to impact the runoff and the small drainage in those downstream. There's localized flooding impacts and pollution. I'm assuming they have used herbicides and pesticides on the ground. They're going to be withdrawing water from the Black Warrior River, millions and millions of gallons. Once that water is used to cool the facility, part of the process is fungicides, algicides, and anti-corrosion agents are added into that water to protect the facility's infrastructure. And then that water is polluted. So it's millions of gallons that are either going to be put in the creek, in the ground, or through the Jefferson County wastewater system. And without knowing enough detail about what they're going to be doing on the site, given the lack of transparency, it's premature to be pushing this thing forward because we don't know what impact it's going to have on our water resources. Um, that's a, that's a big deal. We need to know what impact it's going to have. The Valley Creek system is not a plum system. They're still spilling raw untreated sewage into surrounding communities on a regular basis. So we don't even know if this water's going to make it to a facility for treatment. So there's a lot of unanswered questions. There needs to be more transparency. It'd be a good idea to slow down and make sure we're not all going to get hoodwinked on this.
I want to call for a phone, please. We're not through. They're lined up outside.
Um, my name's Mary Resenbaum.
I didn't hear what she said.
Mary Resenbaum. Um-
Your address.
509 Waterside Circle, McCall. Can I get that name? Sorry, 509 Waterside Circle, McCall, Alabama, 35111. Okay, I'm sorry to repeat things because I don't have the honor of having heard what people's in front of me say. I will start off by saying that map is, or when the developer says it's about 100 acres of that, that's a lie. That is a complete lie because that's impossible. The, the 4.5 means for feet of the white area on that map. That is what the, the black area that surrounds all the little white things, that concrete packs. Then you're going to have of the substations, cooling systems, multiple road entrances, fuel tanks. Um, the footprint alone is already over 103 acres. So what they call 100 acres is actually 103. Or actually, they've called the whole thing 300 acres, but that's not true. Um, this side is not flat. This is a ridge land, steep, soft, and saturated. You don't build heavy structures like this on a multi-million pound beta house on land that unless you first glaze into the ridge, strip the topsoil, try to force the land into submission. And when you do that, the ground fights back. There's sinkholes, foundation failures, landslide, and runoff. If you replace that with millions of square feet of concrete, you just don't remove guards and natural spines, you still would shut. That water will now rush downhill faster, hotter, and dirtier, and it will flood in the communities that never got a say in the decision we began with. And then let's talk about that runoff because it's going to hit Red Mountain Heights first. That community sits red directly downhill and it won't stop there. Bessemer will get it too. This entire watershed engine is in the Valley Creek, and when you replace forest and concrete, the flooding that follows doesn't get signed, doesn't get to say who signs the zoning. It just flows fast, filthy and unstoppable. They've also planned the project not harm wetlands. That's another lie. You can't flatten this ridge, pour millions of pounds of concrete on saturated terrain, and pretend that stormwater and wetlands won't be impacted. Water will runoff. It will flood Red Mountain Heights, and it won't stop there. It's headed to shut the Bessemer and Valley Creek. Dr. Neer, a Yale scientist, said this, that it will nuke Valley Creek. But there's something more alarming. The USDA's official topsoil survey says that this land is unfit for development. The soils are steep, saturated.
You did good, man.
Also, we're glad too, when it happens, because it's not stable rain. The aquifer will crack. That's where Bessemer says they get their water from.
Hello? My name is Shaw Gail. I live at 4904, Yerupahoe, Kansas City. I am-
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
My name is Shaw Gail. I live at 4904 Yerupahoe. Firstly, I'm a fellow of gas and also a doctoral student in environmental sciences at UAB. I'm here to speak about abandoned mine lands. As if anything, there's more information on this, and if you would please look at the comment left by Mandy as it refers to more of the maps and sources. There's, as you, if you were to look at the GIS version of that map, it would show that there's, or that suggests un-mapping mines featured, which may extend to the proposed project area. Basically showing that the abandoned mine lands, scarring land on or near the proposed project site is consistent over time with different angles. Basically, it presents a host of geotechnical and environmental hazards. The map, the Alabama Mine Map Survey shows several abandoned mine lands exist in the same township and range as proposed data center site. In nearby sections 13, 16, 20, through 22, 28, through 32. And you know, it's not necessarily the complete list. And due to the safety risk associated with members of the public, potential public, potentially attempting to access these lands, these areas, not all information known about these locations to the public. The, there are risks when it comes to accessing these areas such as mine substance, subsidence, which is collapsing underground tunnels leading to ground level collapses capable of destroying buildings and critical infrastructures, abandoned shafts and portals, which vertical and sloped mine entrances were never sealed off and have deteriorated, lie beneath the vegetation or fill methane gas emission, which could lead to deadly explosions such as March 2024 home explosion in Oak Grove, formerly known, formerly attributed to mine release of methane in the Alabama Surface Mining Commission, spoil piles and impalements, flood and seepage in regards to the subsurface hydrology of the mine region.
Hello, my name is Pamela Lee. I live at 6149 Rock Mountain Lake Road. And I have many concerns, but one of them is the traffic on Rock Mountain Lake Road where I live, between the interstate and where the data center will be. Five years of construction traffic going up and down, out of two lanes. Narrow, curvy road that has a speed limit of 40, which means people already go 50, 50. I don't think I might be able to handle it. I don't know what it would be to our road and our neighborhood with that much traffic going through it. I also have health concerns. I'm really concerned asthma. And I've had asthma, so that's definitely a concern. And I also understand that if it's sound light industrial, that it has to be back 40 feet from people's houses. But if it has any things grammable, it could be back 150 feet. And I'm just concerned about the diesel generators that could possibly cause some of my concerns maybe that happen with it. Thank you.
I'm Representative Michael Malcolm, founder and executive director of the People's Justice Council. I reside in 9194 Terrace, Pleasant Grove, Alabama. I wanted to speak about cumulative impacts on this morning. And I have to inquire and ask, have you all done a cumulative impact study? Cumulative impact speaks about the things that will happen in direct occurrence, correlation to this particular data center being foot in these communities or in this community. Such as what happens to the natural resources that are being used and can't be replaced, that will be used at alarming rates? What happens to the amount of energy that is being used? And who pays that bill when these data centers are subsidized to be there in the first place? What happens to those livestock? And the people that would live off of their land to subsidize that meager income that they already have? What happens to those children that sleep at night that have to hear the generators that go on while these data centers are being powered? And what happens to those data centers when those pipelines rupture? What happens to the communities when those pipelines rupture that fuel those data centers? What happens to those communities? In other words, I'm saying, who's protecting the ones that hired and selected you? Who's looking out for those that looked out for you? I would hope that those who are here right now listening to me would have a heart to hear what the people are saying when they're saying that they don't want, when they heard you, when you said you wanted this job. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kelly Coleman. I live at Rock Mountain Lakes. I walk this property-
Your address?
1900 Lakeside Drive. I have walked this property for over 15 years. We have hiked with our dogs, arrowhead hunted, swam in the creeks, found wonderful pieces of history. You're forgetting the history of this property. It needs to be studied further before you ruin this property. What about our health, our hearing? This is going to produce large amounts of noise. Our neighborhood is not gonna be quiet. You can walk out there at night, you only see your hands at night, it's so dark. This building is gonna have bright lights. It is not gonna be good for us mentally. We're gonna have a lot of mental illness, physical ailments. Do not destroy this peaceful neighborhood. Who in here right now would love to have this in your backyard? Who? Come on, be honest. Would you want this in your neighborhood? No. This is a priceless piece of property. Do not destroy it. Don't use your power. Use it wisely. We voted you in, we can vote you out. Let my heart belt. Do not destroy this property. We do not need it. Thank you.
James Williams, 5499, Florailla in Bessemer. I live in approximately a half mile from the projects that's actually built. And I'm concerned about the water problem. And it's not, I guess, but I know that the water problem will affect me more than anybody in the community. I'm about 500 feet from the creek that runs by my house. And all the water that comes off of the fountain comes to this creek. Have had flood problems before. And if this goes forward, I know I'll have more flood problems. So I'm concerned deeply about the concern that concerns me and might not affect others. So I want you to be careful in your thinking. Love your brother. Put your effort to help others. When you don't see others being affected, make sure you do everything within your power to help those that may not be able to help themselves.
Hello, I'm Stephen Capri. I'm with Cohaba Alliance for Conservation and Sustainability. My address is 1301 South Hall Road, Birmingham, Alabama, 35213. I provided to the clerk a petition with 94 signatures, as well as about 25 emails and counting that our alliances helped facilitate getting to your inboxes. And this, we found out about this hearing on Thursday and started mobilizing on Friday. So just over the weekend. So a lot of the groups that are here today really weren't aware of this hearing until very recently. So if they were aware of this, then there would be a lot more people here. So there's a lot of constituents who are opposed to this data center. So I'm not gonna rehash all the issues, but one issue that's of concern to the Cohaba Alliance for Conservation and Sustainability is sustainable development. If we're going to have investments in our community, they need to be sustainable. And this does not check any of those boxes. And so, for example, having development be on areas that have already been developed so that we can basically rehabilitate infrastructure rather than creating new infrastructure while we abandon other infrastructure. So not, so rezoning in and of itself is, we should be really questioning whether we should zone and abandon our zoning regime to accommodate development when there's other areas that we could be developing and that would have more community benefit. And so I'm just, that's one of the issues that I think is of concern and we need to have more conversation. I don't think we should go forward with rezoning, right, at least right now, until we have that conversation and ask and have a deeper question about a lot of the sustainability. How is this gonna benefit the community? Is this the right site for this location? I would say no. Is there a better site? Is there a way that we can get away from diesel generators? Is there a way that this could be on existing corridors of transit? There's just so many questions that are unanswered, and we just need to take a pause on this.
Madam President, I promise you I'm talking something different than what- My name is Marshall Killijord. I live at 6177 Mountain Forest, Alabama. I've heard all these messages are very important. There's no doubt about it. I brought my personal word, that I live in Alabama, I want to leave this message. I want to leave this, I want to leave this message. Emphasize the responsibility. The Bible emphasizes our responsibility as a human to care for God's creation, highlighting that it is a gift of cherished and stewarding and not exploited. That's brought out by Genesis 128. Be fruitful and multiply, fill the earth and subdue it. And I have diminished over the fish of the sea and over the birds of the heavens and nowhere ever living creature that moves on the earth. Genesis 215 says, "The Lord God took the man, put him in the garden of Eden to work it and to keep it." He also then, Job 1210 says, "In his hands is the life of every creature and the breath of all mankind." What is that, the old spray? That caring for creation is not merely an option, but a responsibility rooted in our relationship with God and His creation. This includes recognizing intrinsic value of all created things and acting as stewards rather than owners of the earth. Wow. Goes further. Job himself, I'm sure most of all of you have seen it, said these words, "Though he slay me, yet will I trust him." What does that mean? Job's enduring extreme suffering includes the loss of possessions, family, and health. He's also facing accusations and misrepresentation from his friends. Job's words highlighted that faith is part of this, belief in God. So let me leave you with this. Second Samuel says, "Two men were in the city. One was rich and one was poor. The rich man took a poor man's life, and he cherished tremendous." I pray you, ladies and gentlemen, he cherished credit. Nathan confronted David, and he said to him. And David responded and said, "That man should be imprisoned." Nathan looked at him and said, "David, you are the man." I ask you here today, please don't take our lamb. Please don't take our lamb. There's many more lambs locations for this facility. I ask you this, pause, consider what you're doing. Thank you.
I understand there's no one else out in the hallway. Is there anyone else in here that wants to speak?
Madam Chair. I want to call for a vote, please.
I call for discussion. Attorney, do you have anything else that you wish to speak?
No, ma'am, not to the lawyers, sir.
Counsel, are there any questions that you have, any comments you would like to make? I have one more. Just sit. I'm gonna hop after you, okay?
Okay.
My name is David Havron. My name is David Havron. I live at 2501 Waterfront Drop, McCullough. I'm the president of Rock Mountain Landowners Association. Rock Mountain Lake was founded about 60 years ago as a quiet fishing community with five lakes. It's a diverse, as a diverse community with residents of all ages, meaning the small children. Small communities like these are disappearing far from America. It's your duty to see that that does not happen here. In a recent US government order, executive order, the explicit recognition of declining air quality and rising cancer rates highlights the immediate risk of AI data centers. At what risk are our children and our grandchildren? We have not seen a study showing the environmental health risk of a project this magnitude in a residential area like ours. If the government is correct, how are the areas at risk? Are just our communities, all of McCullough, all of Bessemer, all of Western Jefferson County? I would think you would like to know the answer to these questions before moving forward. In the last meeting of the previous committee, only one member asked pertinent questions and appeared to understand the effects of this project. She voted no. At the previous meeting, we were told that this would not cause cancer, but how do they know that? The first hyperscale data center was built in 2006, just 19 years ago. Cigarettes were introduced in 16th century but not discovered caused cancer until the 1950s. Asbestos was first used 4,000 B.C., but was not discovered caused cancer until 1942. After 10 to 40 years of exposure, my father got asbestos toxicity from working in the U.S. Navy. We were told at the previous meeting that there are no eagles, but there's a picture of a bald eagle, one of three bald eagles, that lives in a nest in pine tree in my backyard by the lake. We were also told there are no endangered species in this area. But Dr. Thomas Neer of Yale University has discovered a species aptly called Birmingham darter that is found nowhere in the world, but right here. And the report from the biology papers, publications, thing I handed out to you. What else have we been misled about? I understand the economic impact of the city of Bessemer, but at what price? The sole responsibility of the government is to serve the people. The people do not want this, not here. Please intervote. Go to this zoning request unless accompanied to another area that is already zoned for industrial use, or at least let's get the answers to these questions. See the environmental studies. Do the necessary due diligence. Because this affects me, my wife, and my son. I would expect you to do no less than your mission.
Madam Chair. I'd like to call a motion for ordinance of apartments favor.
Have a motion to consider the ordinance to rezon the property. Requires unanimous consent.
To consider.
To consider.
Yes.
This is just a consider. This is not a motion for property. A motion to consider. We have a motion by Counsel Porter, a second by Counsel Jackson. And Stevens, to consider a motion. Roll call.
Counsel Carter. Counsel Jackson.
Aye.
Counsel King.
Aye.
Counsel Person.
Aye.
Counsel Stevens.
Aye.
Counsel Porter.
Aye.
Counsel Thichman.
Aye.
6518.
This will be considered at the next meeting. It will not be voted on today. I have seen. Hey, Red the Lucius, off the line in the air. Let's help them again, for everyone to listen.
Yes, we would. I got air conditioning in my car. Thank you.
Brad, just one question. Are you guys, are you guys gonna release the environmental...
Yes.